Now the exits in the room, there's an exit to the left. I also remind the audience members to please turn off all electronic devices or switch them to airplane mode. And thank you in advance for helping us maintain a respectful, safe, and civil forum space. Welcome to the City of Longmont Candidate Forum, co-hosted by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County, Longmont Public Media, and cosponsor EcoCycle. My name is Martine Eleonore. I am a proud member of the League, and I am pleased to serve as moderator for today's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. For over 100 years, we have encouraged informed and active participation in government. EcoCycle's mission is to innovate, implement, and advocate for local and global zero-waste solutions to foster a more regenerative, equitable, and climate-resilient future. Neither the League, Longmont Public Media, or EcoCycle support or oppose political candidates or parties. Now to the forum. The City of Longmont is governed by a seven-member city council, including the mayor. The mayor is elected to serve a two-year term, and each council member is elected to serve a four-year term. For the coming November 4 election, voters will be asked to elect a new mayor, one city council member from Ward 2, and two at-large city council members. For the next 45 minutes, we will be hearing from the two Ward 2 city council candidates. The format will be as follows. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for an opening statement. We will then ask questions that have been submitted online by the Longmont community. Please note that in some instances, our League question reviewers have combined several similar questions into one question on that topic. In most instances, each candidate will have one minute to answer a question. Please do not do any actions to interrupt or disrupt the forum. Please refrain from clapping, booing, or otherwise showing your approval or disapproval of any response. The candidates are seated in the order they will appear on the general election ballot. Now to the opening statements and questions. For the opening statements, we will begin with Ward 2 candidate Popkin.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this and for having me. My name is Matthew Popkin. I am the current city council member for Ward 2. I was appointed in January to fill a vacancy from council member Marsha Martin, who resigned for family health reasons at the end of last year. And so since January, I've had the pleasure and honor and challenge of serving Ward 2 and the city, both as, in many different roles, as city council for Ward 2, as the chair of Longmont's Urban Renewal Authority, as a commissioner on our housing authority, and in multiple other committee and liaison roles on behalf of the community. I previously served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Longmont for two years prior to my appointment. And for my entire professional career, I have worked at multiple levels of, all levels of government, and helped cities and counties across the country with sustainability, transportation, infrastructure, and community reinvestment goals. This is really relevant today because Longmont faces a whole host of unprecedented challenges, from an uncertain state budget situation that we're going to have to navigate, from a lot of uncertainty at the federal government level, and from local economic considerations as well. I want Longmont to thrive despite these challenges. So to do that, we have to manage our growth, we have to increase affordability, and we have to prepare for a more resilient future. When people ask who I am, what I tell them is I'm the city nerd who shows up and gets things done.
Candidate Simkins.
Hello, and thank you all for being here today, and for those of you watching at home. I'm Teresa Simkins, and I am running for council because I bring a wealth of government experience and a public servant mindset to the creation of public policy. Professionally, I've worked for more than 25 years in government. I've worked alongside all kinds of elected officials at the federal, state, county, and local level, including a time I spent as the town clerk in Nederland, a Boulder County attorney, and a communication specialist for the City of Longmont for seven and a half years. I came to Boulder County in 1997, so I've been here a long time, and I settled in Longmont in 2013. I raised a lot of kids here. I have seven children that call me mom. I have two I gave birth to, three that are stepchildren, and two foster children. And together, they attended a handful of SVVSD schools. I plan to offer the City of Longmont a balanced, practical, and collaborative leadership model that focuses on controlled, coordinated growth and preserves the practical, innovative, and welcoming spirit of Longmont. And I want to give Ward 2's voters the kind of thoughtful, genuine representation that we deserve. Thank you.
For our first question, we will begin with Ward 2 candidate Simkins. As a city council member, what can you do or will you do to help people overwhelmed with the process of opening a small business?
This is a great question, and one I was hoping that you would ask, because Ward 2 is actually the economic engine of the city. If you look at where Ward 2 is located, we comprise almost all of the businesses in Longmont. So it's a very important issue for Ward 2. The vast majority of our businesses in Longmont are actually small businesses. I was told yesterday that it's somewhere around 90%. So we really have to take care of our small businesses. I think that one of the things that has discouraged me in watching council recently is that they tend to target fees at small business owners rather than spreading them out more evenly across Longmont, and that's not a great, that's not a great look for us. We have neighbors, Frederick and Firestone, who are offering large incentives in the numbers of $75,000 or more to open small businesses there. If we don't take care of our small businesses, we will lose them. Thank you.
Candidate Popkin.
This is a really timely question, because when Longmont, the city's been discussing whether to increase the minimum wage here. And one of the things we heard from the minimum wage forum that the city hosted in August, where we had multiple different businesses who sat in there, business owners who sat in there, many who are right around the street from where we are right now. The main thing, the key thing that they said was, beyond the imposition that that would have, although there can be merits to it, the timeline for permitting that the city has for approving even some basic appliances or certifying some of the construction permits can be a real barrier. That is something that is within the city's control, and that's been something that since that forum and discussion, we've been having a direct conversation with internally to try to figure out how to improve permitting timelines. I'm disappointed that it's taken that long to get to that stage, and so I think what that means to me is that we have to be out talking to small business owners more frequently and more consistently. There are multiple other ways we can streamline permitting for construction to encourage the types of development we want, and we'll get into that later.
The next question comes from our cosponsor for today's forum, EcoCycle. Studies have shown that applying compost to soils increases drought resiliency, supports regenerative agriculture, and reduces methane from landfills. Do you support increasing the diversion of food scraps and yard trimmings from landfills into beneficial uses such as making compost? What ideas do you have to further increase diversion of these organic materials and promote the use of finished compost on agricultural, municipal, commercial, and residential landscapes? Candidate Popkin.
Sure, thank you for the question. This is a great question because part of the reason we're thinking, there are local and there are global reasons for thinking about composting. The local reason is for all of the reasons you just listed, how it enhances the value of our soil, the quality of our resilience locally. And from a global standpoint, methane is extremely more potent as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide is when we think about the global climate change and the atmospheric impacts that that has. So yes, the short answer is yes, I absolutely support increasing our diversion. We have some strong programs here. I was actually the only person to vote against recently the utility rate fees for solid waste management because we didn't have a thoughtful strategy of kind of incentivizing composting where we wanted it, and we were treating all types of waste the same. So I would love to revisit that with a new council. And the one thing that I would urge people, I would love to have, I would love this to be universal. I would want us to be careful doing that, because the moment you get contamination in the compost, it decreases the quality, if not eliminates the value of it altogether. Thank you.
Candidate Simkins.
I know that you're here to hear all the ways that we are different, because that's what you need to figure out how to vote on November 4. Unfortunately, on this question, there's not a lot of light between my position and Matthew's position. I agree with everything he just said. When I was working for the City of Longmont, there were many of us that felt that compost should be treated the way that recycling was, that it should just be a given. You get your bin, you educate people on how to properly compost, and it just becomes part of our way of doing things in Longmont. We didn't do that, and I think that, you know, to Matthew's point, that's something we really have to go back and reexamine. And if we make it universal, and if we don't charge big fees for it, I think we'll get some great participation.
This following question is a two-part question, and we will give 90 seconds for a response. After a great deal of press and public engagement about the proposal to exchange some of Longmont's open space property, the distal property, with the tall public works property in order to build a regional compost facility with Boulder County and develop city infrastructure, it appears the city council has tabled the decision. Do you support the tool-distal land swap? Why or why not? Should all proposals that involve selling, trading, or disposing of open space land go to the voters? Candidate Simkins.
Okay, I feel like she took this right off my website. Right from the beginning, I have been aggressively opposed to this, not because we don't need a composting facility, not because I'm not in favor of compost. Like most Ward 2 residents that I've talked to, composting is a great idea, but when land is designated open space and purchased with open space funds, the city, county, whomever, the government, is merely a steward of that land. They don't own it, we own it. So if they want to use it for something else, they need to ask the property owners through a ballot measure. It has since been tabled, yes, and I am exuberant about that, very, very happy, but I would go back to the fact that if they were planning on doing this, they should have put it on the ballot in November. They knew this was coming, it wouldn't have cost us any money to do it that way, and we, the people, could have had a say in what happens to our open space. I think it sets a terrible precedent for city council to even consider doing that on their own without a vote of the people, and I'm glad that they won't be.
Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, I mostly agree with everything that Teresa just said on that. I'll clarify a couple key points. I was appointed to city council in the middle of this, and so I was kind of thrown right into, or I threw myself, I should say, right into the middle of this discussion. It had already been referred through our process, into our process with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I think what was clear was you can follow a legal process, but that doesn't inherently mean you build trust by following the established process. And I think that's something that became really evident as this started to move forward and as people started to ask questions, for all of the reasons Teresa already said. I do want to provide an update on that. Actually, just this past week, city council removed it from being tabled and squashed the deal altogether. And so that is now off the table, literally and figuratively. And I also want to clarify, what was the other, on the ballot piece. So, you know, I think in general, if you're going to make a meaningful change to open space uses, absolutely, we should consider a very formal process, whether it's a ballot measure or not. To say every single one risks kind of putting us in the California referendum territory. And so like, there could be like a street easement that is adjusted for something that, you know, I wouldn't want to go to the ballot. I don't think that's a productive use of our time and resources, but for major decisions, I think that that is prudent.
Do you support the Longmont City Council holding a study session soon on single- and multi-winner ranked choice voting, also known as RCV, to consider placing an RCV charter amendment question on the 2026 ballot? Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, so for those not familiar, ranked choice voting is a system where you cast a preference-based vote, not just the one person that you want for this race. Now, in a two-person race, that doesn't change anything, but if you look across some of the other races that we have, where you have six candidates running for two spots in the at-large race, and you have four candidates running for mayor, that kind of a ranked-choice preference base actually gives people more say in kind of their preference, and has a more likely outcome of reflecting the average will and the average preferences across voters. So I think that would actually be a productive step at the local government. I believe Fort Collins is just implementing this now. I think Boulder's working on implementing it, there are a few other municipalities in Colorado. And in the state of Alaska, I think the state of Maine, and Washington DC also have ranked choice voting. So this is not unprecedented, this is not untested, and we can learn from others that have been doing this well to implement it here to better reflect the will of Longmont voters.
Candidate Simkins.
So I think that this is definitely something I would welcome talking about in a study session. I think that's what study sessions are for, to become better informed, as well as to hear from residents what they think. I think a lot of candidates have made up their mind about ranked choice voting, and there are a lot of different reasons why they might support that. I would be interested to know what the people of Longmont want, and whether ranked choice voting is something that they actually want to embrace. If they do, then absolutely we should move forward with it. As Matthew said, it's not like it hasn't been done elsewhere, but if they don't, then I think we need to listen to them on that, too. I think that we've gotten in a rut with council where sometimes folks feel they know better than the voters, and I don't think that's always the case. Thank you.
If raising the amount of permanently affordable housing has not made Boulder more affordable, what are the expectations for a similar approach in Longmont? Candidate Simkins.
So eventually you run out of room. You can build and build and build, and eventually you run out of room, or you start to sprawl. Those are the two options. So I've been really interested in researching and talking to people and finding out the ways that other places have made things more permanently affordable. I think that there are a lot of options that we have. We need to build affordable housing options that are deed-restricted and income-based, not for people to live in forever, because they're not building equity in those places, but they have financial stability, their rent isn't going up. All the apartments that we've built, you just get on that rent hamster wheel, right, where you can't get ahead, because every time you, your salary goes up, so does your rent. I'd like to look at expanding funding for the city's down payment assistance program. I'd like to identify mortgage lenders who are accustomed to working with people who don't have high credit ratings, maybe because of a medical bill, but they do have stable incomes, and I'd like to see more projects like True North that are quality, affordable housing in good locations for our community.
Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, just to briefly follow up on the previous question, part of the goal of a ballot question in and of itself, if we're asking the voters what they think and whether we should change the system, is to hear from voters. So to be clear, not, by saying where my position is, it doesn't mean that that is the way, the highway. We need to hear from the voters through the ballot question if we're going to change how we conduct our elections. On the question of affordable housing, there are three main type ways to think about this. There's publicly subsidized housing, which is managed, and we have housing vouchers in our housing authority overseas, and then there's kind of what the market will bear at different levels. And what we're starting to see with the increase in apartments that we've had is we're starting to reach more of a saturation point, which is actually a good thing in terms of stabilizing rent increases and costs. We're starting to hear that that rent increase is slowing, and you're starting to have a few more vacancies, which actually increases the supply, and finally starts to balance out that supply and demand of market-based dynamics. What I would like to see is how we use our space going forward, particularly older industrial sites, to shape different types of homes and different sizes of homes for more flexible,
House Bill 24-1007 became effective on July 1 of last year. It removed Longmont's right to limit the number of unrelated people living in a house. The goal was to make housing affordable, but if investors buy up single-family homes and turn them into multi-bedroom moneymakers, how are working families supposed to compete with that to achieve homeownership? Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, thank you for the question. This is a complex one, and one we definitely can't address fully in 60 seconds. What I will say here is there were some significant unintended consequences of that state law, and that's why I think the Colorado Municipal League pushed back on that, why many cities have been pushing back on that, and why we are actively dealing with some of those consequences now in Longmont. If we have not resolved all of those, we absolutely should continue to do so. As someone who just recently tried to and was fortunate to break into the housing market officially with my wife, it was difficult. And so the more investor-owned properties that are purchased, the reduction in our housing supply on the for-sale side of things really comes to be, that limits opportunities for people of my generation, and it limits people from those opportunities who are trying to downsize at other stages in life, where there is not a good enough housing supply to want to trade in, say, a four-bedroom house that you bought in the 80s, to get something that's a reasonable price point for a one- or two-bedroom unit now. And so we have to look at those consequences and the housing supply impacts overall.
Candidate Simkins.
Okay, this is another area where there's not a whole lot of difference between our positions, but I'll just highlight a few. But one thing I want to say is that I was super disappointed in Governor Polis's decision to move forward with this. I support a lot of what he does, but we are a home rule city, and in Colorado, zoning has always been the purview of local entities, and it was incredibly disappointing to me to see him overstep into that, in my opinion. I think zoning should be local. I also think that when we look at housing scarcity, we need to look at housing scarcity for whom, and build for them. For instance, to Matthew's point about downsizing, we don't have enough senior housing. We really need to figure out what kind of senior housing we need. Are they duplexes? Are they cottages? Are they communities? And then we need to build for that. And if developers only want to build luxury apartments, then maybe they aren't the right of partners for us.
What is your opinion or view about relaxing our land development code to make it easier for developers to build in Longmont? Candidate Simkins.
Okay, so the land use code, I think there are two parts to this. First of all, streamlining the permitting process to allow homeowners to do more things to their own home at less expense, I think is wonderful, and something we should absolutely be looking at. I have a mother-in-law suite in my basement. My mother declined very quickly with dementia, and I was able to make that happen, but I also had her money as the means to create that. Most people don't. So I do think that's an important piece. However, redoing the land use code to allow, you know, kind of people to build whatever they want on their property, I'll give you just one example. Let's say you have a neighbor who wants to sell their property and can't get the price they want, but they can sell it to a developer and get that price and more. And that developer can then put a four-unit, eight-unit apartment building right next to you in your tiny neighborhood. It's just something to think about.
Candidate Popkin.
Thank you. So I appreciate, I think Teresa and I are very much aligned on the accessory dwelling units or the in-law suites. That was something I was really proud to help amend this year, to make it easier for Longmont-based property owners to have more flexibility in how they set up ADUs. The second thing that I want to talk to is I think we want to be really tactical if we're going to relax our land use code. We want to be tactical where we do it. And so my priority from, since starting to get involved, based on all of the feedback I've heard from residents and all the plans that we had, was to think about how we could implement and grow more strategically in our urban renewal areas. If you haven't heard that term before, what that means are some of the older industrial sites in Longmont, everywhere from kind of the Sugar Mill over to Left Hand Brewery area, those kind of underutilized industrial areas. One of the things that I championed this year was the creation of an urban, or the start of the process to create, an urban renewal innovation zone, which was specifically focused on streamlining our code and land use guidelines to attract innovative developers to those specific areas, not a carte blanche across the city.
Do you have plans to help build more public transit and the city more walkable or bikeable? Candidate Popkin.
I think I need 10 minutes for this question. The short answer is yes. The first priority that I would want to work with other council members on is actually creating a bus route, an express bus between Longmont and the Denver International Airport. As I've been going door-to-door and talking to people, that is, there is, I've met virtually no one who opposes that. Some people would ride it more than others, but that is a very well-trafficked route, the AB 1 and AB 2 from Boulder to the airport. Unfortunately, we don't have that, and yet we're the same-sized city now, and RTE does not seem to appreciate that. So we have a few different pathways on how we could implement that, and I think we could work with our partners in Lafayette and Erie, or in Frederick Firestone and Deacona, to figure out how to create a route that serves their populations and communities, too. But that is something that would actually take cars off the road, it would improve air quality, and it would make costs more affordable for travel, for work, or for personal reasons. I absolutely, I voted in favor of expanding our, bringing a regional bike share to Longmont this year, and I was actually, one of the first things that I'm proud of was helping reopen the St. Frank Greenway Trail for four months this spring, to at least allow a little bit of breathing room for people to use one of our finest amenities.
Candidate Simkins.
So again, a lot of agreement, but the, one thing that I would like to focus on is the addition of the multimodal transportation options in Longmont. So Matthew spoke to the bike lanes, super important. A lot of people in Longmont do like to bike to and from work, to and from school, they like to walk. We need to make that as easy as possible for them. We also need to recognize that not everyone enjoys that or is capable of it, whether they're seniors, or people with disabilities. You know, even riding the bus can be really, really difficult for them. And so I definitely just want to kind of put a little flag in there that when we're talking about transportation, we need to really think about all the different people that live in Longmont, and focus on making sure that we account for all their needs and not apply a one-size-fits-all approach.
In 2024, staff secured a $295,000 state grant to further Longmont's research on air quality data, and the funds are expected to be available to Longmont this year. What do you see as the biggest contributors to Longmont's poor air quality, and how would you utilize these funds to reduce it? Candidate Simkins.
Excuse me. First, I want to say that I like that the first approach to this grant is that we collect data. We really need to know the actual extent of our problem, and, so that we can drill down into how to solve that problem. I think also, we need to acknowledge upfront that our landscape has, is part of our problem. It's a regional issue and not a Longmont issue. We get a lot of methane, oil, and gas emissions from Weld County that kind of settles in against the mountains here. against the mountains here, and ourselves, Lyons, Boulder, we're all kind of in that boat together. However, that doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of things we can do. Again, back to multimodal transportation, Ride Longmont is a great option for folks who don't want to own a car but need access once in a while. And I think we need to think about stopping more cars, and if we keep building more apartments, we are definitely not going to be helping our air quality.
Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, I too appreciate that we're studying this first because when I think about the kind of core sources for impacting our air quality, the first is vehicle emissions, as Teresa said. The second, oil and gas emissions from those operations. The third would be kind of heavy industrial or commercial operations and the emissions that come from those facilities. And then the fourth one would be our aircraft and leaded fuel as well. And so there are multiple different iterations on that, and those are solved with different strategies. And so I'd want to look at truly the data here to see kind of what's the most pressing need, because some of the things blow over, literally and figuratively, and some of them kind of stay right here, like ozone can kind of hibernate right over our community. And so we'd want to think about the types of different air pollution and what directly impacts human health and environmental health here before fully deciding exactly where to spend those dollars, so that we can try to do the most with the amount of money that we have.
How would you address sober living facilities that can now hose, excuse me, that can now house multiple unrelated registered sex offenders? Candidate Popkin.
How would we? We actually already passed a policy on this in May, and we set a policy citywide that prohibits more than three registered sex offenders from living in the city of Longmont, even though the state law allows for more, as we talked about some of the unintended consequences before. And so this is an area where we have been setting policy there. There are other communities across the Front Range in Colorado who have stepped into this space too, and we're seeing that work. So that's the first step there, I think, from a general recovery resident standpoint. That is an active conversation, actually, with the Behavioral Health Administration at the state level and our congressional, sorry, our state delegation, to figure out how to amend some of those laws and work with the Colorado Municipal League to address some of those very unintended consequences that we have seen directly in Longmont this year.
Candidate Simkins.
Okay, so this is actually where you're going to find some difference between myself and Matthew. I worked in this field for many years, and I've done a, you know, when you work in something, you do a lot of research in it. The original ordinance that came before city council would have provided for a thousand feet distance between a, where registered sex offenders can live and a daycare, a school, or a park. The house in question sits within eye shot of a park, almost eye shot of a school, and is where children walk past every single day to get to the school in taking the exit out of the subdivision. The neighborhood showed up, they wanted the thousand feet, which is standard pretty much across the country. That's typically what folks are doing. And Mr. Popkin was the primary opponent of that and had it reduced to 500 feet. So on that, we differ greatly.
Our city, Longmont, depends on migrants from all around the world. What, if any, actions should come from the city council if ICE comes into our local businesses? Candidate Simkins.
I think that our city attorneys need to really dig into this and find out exactly and precisely what is available to us to resist ICE. I don't think ICE has any business in Longmont. I know that there are people at the federal level that would disagree and do, but I don't think that the way that they're going about enforcing immigration policy is American in any way. So I think that we need to know what is working in other cities that have already faced a heavy ICE presence and how legally we can protect our residents of Longmont who need that protection right now. It's starting with people with brown skin, but it could be any of us next time. So I think that we really need to all come together like we are capable of doing and stand firm against ICE.
Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, so our current approach in the city is to cooperate with federal authorities on criminal warrants. That does not include civil, just pure immigration warrants. That is specifically for ICE, that is not involved, our Longmont Department of Public Safety. I support that approach because there are many crimes that can be addressed through that that do not touch on just a pure immigration issue. Now that said, there are, again, unintended consequences from just having that type of federal presence and frankly fairly unrestrained federal activity that's happening right now. And so what I would like to see is that, and how I would approach this, is to continue to be an ally to the communities that are impacted directly, follow the lead of their leaders, and be that kind of representative and liaison between our authorities and their leadership to understand what is most necessary and what is most helpful to them, so that we can make sure that we are not overstepping and also supporting all of the communities that are scared and frustrated and feeling really concerned about their day-to-day lives.
This question is about qualifications. How long have you lived in Longmont and what, if any, grassroots work or campaigns have you participated in? Please be specific about your involvement in terms of your role. Candidate Popkin.
Yeah, my wife and I moved to Longmont in the spring of 2021. We moved directly here. Longmont stood out to us for a number of reasons that I'm happy to tell you about another time. So it's been about four and a half years now living in Longmont, almost to the month, and it's been some of the best years of our life. My wife and I got married at Sandstone Ranch in the southeast part of town and in our backyard for our reception. Since then, mostly, I just wanted to offer to be helpful in implementing a lot of the goals that Longmont already had established. And so my first involvement was joining the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2023. I subsequently joined our Brownfield Advisory Committee, which is a little hidden tool in our toolkit there to help look at reactivating some of those older industrial sites. And that's where my professional expertise is as well. And then since then, joined city council and the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and a whole host of other committees there. Separately, I'm also on the board of Jack Solar Garden, the Colorado Agro-Voltaic Learning Center, helping kind of educate farmers, landowners, and solar developers on the best practices for citing clean energy, particularly solar, on ag land.
Candidate Simkins.
Okay, so I said previously, I came to Boulder County in 1997. I immediately joined the Social Services Advisory Board for Boulder County, got a job as a Boulder County Attorney. You know, one of the reasons that the boards are great is because they give you visibility into how government works. But I realized pretty quickly that I know that. I know how government works. And so it was better to allow other people to step forward for boards and get them a chance to really understand how their government works. Also, almost within six months of, no, less than that, coming to Longmont, I got a job at the City of Longmont. So I was spending all day, every day, working for the residents of Longmont. I also participated in my children's schools in St. Rayne. I know this community. I've lived in Ward II the entire time I've lived in Longmont, and I do feel like I know what we need.
Longmont adopted a universal recycling ordinance, URO, in 2023, but its success depends on strong implementation, enforcement, and community support. If elected, how would you ensure the URO is fully implemented and enforced? Candidate Simkins.
So recycling is actually pretty popular in Longmont. It's one of those things that often happens where when it was first introduced, some, you know, a lot of people gave a little pushback, like it's new, it's change, I don't want to have to do this, what's it going to cost the city? But then over time, we got an awful lot of buy-in. And part of the time that I worked for the city, I worked for our waste disposal and recycling unit. You know, I fully support our recycling program, and I think we have some amazing people heading up that program. Actual leaders in our region work for the City of Longmont and head up that program. The issue, I think, a lot of times comes down to funding and trying to fund all of the important things in Longmont. But I do think that recycling is something that this city council and previous city councils have supported, not fully to the extent that was originally planned, and it would definitely be worth taking another look at when we're doing budget.
Candidate Popkin.
Thank you. If you think about the old adage, reduce, reuse, recycle, recycling is actually the least important part of that chain. Reducing the amount of consumption and the amount of products we use, reusing what we can, and then recycling what we cannot reuse or reduce is actually the most impactful way to reduce our waste impact overall and our impact on the environment and our health. That said, for implementation of this specific policy that's already been established, building on what Teresa said, I would just add two other things. I mentioned the fee structure that we have for waste management and solid waste management before. I'd want to make sure that if we want to prioritize that, that the incentives are aligned there to actually decrease the waste that ends up in a landfill at the end of the day, either through composting or recycling. And then also make sure that we're not penal, over-penalizing the offenders of that who are trying to figure out how to implement that and try to meet those goals, especially some of our small businesses, and make sure that they have the tools, the education, understanding of how this works before we add any kind of enforcement mechanism on there.
We all make decisions within imperfect knowledge, insufficient time, and in the face of strongly differing advice from experts. In the area of energy and city electrification policies, how do you personally arrive at decisions, and how would you suggest city council develop a sound basis for current policy and its evolution over time? Candidate Popkin.
Could you repeat the question?
It is a long one.
Yes, I'll give you 90 seconds to answer this one.
Very generous, thank you.
We all make decisions with imperfect knowledge, insufficient time, and in the face of strongly differing advice from experts. In the area of energy and city electrification policies, how do you personally arrive at decisions, and how would you suggest city council develop a sound basis for current policy and its evolution over time?
So we have 90 seconds for this?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a great question and a really important question for Longmont's near-term future. The next council is going to be helping implement the current goal or adjust the current goals we have to meet the 2030 goal of being 100% renewable by 2030. That, based on all the utility modeling that's been done, is not going to happen. And so then the question is, do we want to continue to maintain a goal that we know we're not going to hit, or do we want to revise that goal to get as close as we think we can and set clear expectations for our community? This is actually a space I know really well, and I think one of the big differences between myself and Teresa here, I've worked, I work with cities professionally on their energy transition strategy, actively talking to cities as small as 1,600 people and as large as the City of Chicago. And this is something I do regularly in my day job and have done for over almost a decade. I have a master's in energy and environmental policy, and I think one of the really key things, as we have these types of ambitious goals and as we have new programs like Community Solar and different utility rates that we're setting up, both at the residential and commercial level, that we are able to effectively scrutinize these and ask key questions to help shape this. We have some really qualified staff at LPC, and we've been running a really well, effective and reliable utility. And so this transition is a lot of uncertainty, and so I think it would be really helpful to have another voice in the room and another person taking a look at the plans and the programs and policies that we set up, learning from, but not prescribing solutions from other communities. And that's on utility accountability and the energy transition strategy that we have overall.
Candidate Simkins.
So Matthew is super knowledgeable in this, and I am the first to acknowledge that this is one of his talents and his backgrounds. However, city council has to deal with a multitude of issues that stretch way beyond electrification, urban renewal, and his lack of experience in other areas, as evidenced by the sex offender registration ordinance, really kind of shows up at times. And that was part of why I decided to run. I've seen and worked with so many city councils, legislative committees, members of Congress, and it is great to have the occasional expert. But typically, you want a leader who is a generalist, who can get into all of the different little pieces and understand them because they're all going to come together, and it's a holistic approach to your city, not just focusing on this or this because you like it and you know it. I've worked for cities where that was the case, and one in particular, I left after nine months because it was a council that was unable to really listen to the needs of the community. Electrification goals absolutely need to be revisited. As Matthew said, we're not going to make those, and there are actually, to be fair, some good reasons why we got off track on those. COVID, for one, let's start there. But I do think that there are plenty of people and plenty of consultants that we can talk to about these issues in order to make wise decisions moving forward.
For our final question of the forum, we will have a 90-second response time. We will start with candidate Simkins. What makes you the best candidate for city council Ward II?
So I think when you're representing a ward rather than running at large, you really need to know that ward. They are looking to you to be their voice on council. That is why we have wards. You know, I've lived in this ward since 2013. I raised children in this ward. I worked for the City of Longmont during that time, and I've spent decades working in other areas of government locally where I gained a lot of insights into how things work here. I never planned on being on city council. I was very comfortable being staff. But what I realize now is that council needs a public service mindset. We need to go back to the idea that council works for the people, and we aren't there just to promote a platform that we really believe in and we think is best for our community. We don't always know best, and I think listening is a really wonderful way to forward the goals of our city. We have a lot of talented, amazing people in Longmont. Our social capital here is incredible, and there are some people that can really add a lot to our discussions, and I'd like to see more of that. I want to focus on what's important to Ward II, and I want to bring that public service mindset to the city council again. Thank you.
Candidate Popkin.
I talked at the beginning about how Longmont faces a series of unprecedented challenges. And in that situation, in any situation frankly, effective government is key, especially in these days. And, you know, this is a serious, this is a serious area where my opponent and I disagree. I do believe that specializations have a place on city council and that they matter. And ideally, I would, I don't want to see seven Matthews. I want to see seven different people who can bring different types of specializations to city council so that we shape those decisions together. And as a reminder, on any policy, on any amendment, on any change, it takes four votes, not one person. And so it takes one person who might have something to offer, and then three other people who have to agree that that is the right approach for the city to actually set policy, to set the policy direction and the vision for the community. And so when I think about the specializations that I would hope to continue to bring, it's how do we reactivate our old industrial sites to really manage our growth in strategic areas and to really reinvest in areas that are creating and have been public health and safety hazards in our community for decades? I know I didn't come up with the idea of reactivating the Sugar Mill. It's been closed for 49 years. Multiple city plans have that in there. And what I'm hoping to bring is the how, because that's one of the things that I can direct on, and that direction really matters because we can't, we don't have the time to ask staff on every single little thing, proactively or reactively, on how to move forward. So urban renewal, clean energy strategy- So urban renewal, clean energy strategy, electrification and efficiency, and I think that I have the federal and state advocacy experience on behalf of cities to actually help operationalize those where appropriate.
On behalf of the League and EcoCycle, I would like to thank our candidates not only for their participation in today's forum, but also for their participation in the democratic process. Running for office and serving as an elected official is hard work. Thank you to our forum volunteers for their essential help. A huge thank you goes to our 2025 election sponsors, Elevations Credit Union, Inspire Hair and Salon, Christina's Luxuries, and Kaplan &amp; Ernest Attorneys at Law. A short and sweet reminder that donations to the League of Women Voters of Boulder County help us continue our education and advocacy in the community. Donate today at LWVBC.org. For more information about the upcoming election and the candidates, please go to the League's premier voter information guide, vote411.org. And as always, remember that democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you for coming, and as we adjourn, please join me in a big round of applause for all of our candidates. Thank you, everyone.
Is this still on?